Oh, rude. Last week, Barry.
Short speech, is it, Barry?
It's no, no, I've got 244 pages, double sided, very small print, A4. So get your dabbies out.
I hope you didn't print them all out, Barry.
No, no, it's all electronic. I've used up all my memory, it's so long.
I'm so pleased. I'm going to mute everyone now. You're on mute, Barry, so unmute when you're ready.
Tell me when you're ready to start, Julie.
I'm ready, yep.
Okay, good evening, everybody, and welcome to Gillingham's Mayor Making for the Civic Year 2021 to 2022. And this evening, we will open the event with the Town Clerk. So I'm going to hand you over to our Town Clerk, Mrs. Julie Hawkins.
Thank you. So good evening, everyone, and welcome to Gillingham Town Council Mayor Making Ceremony. So we are in the unusual position of holding a remote mayor making this year due to the national restrictions on face-to-face meetings. We trust that this will be the only time we have to hold our mayor making in such a way. It does mean that we have the potential to reach a wider audience within the town and from other parts of the country, though. So in order that we can concentrate on the key participants during the ceremony, I'd like to request that you kindly turn off your cameras if you haven't already done so. And Jill's now going to mute all the participants in the meeting. So if I can ask each active member to turn on their camera and microphone at the point of their active participation. So just to let you know, we are recording this tonight via Microsoft Teams. Okay, so I'd now like to explain a little bit about the role of the mayor and the deputy mayor and the election process that takes place. So historically, there has been a mayor of Gillingham since 1973. The mayor represents the town and its people. The mayor is a symbol of authority identifiable by robes and chains of office. The mayor connects the present day with the history, customs and traditions of the area and acts as a symbol of continuity. Prior to the 20th century, the choice of mayor was very restricted. But today, they can come from any class, gender or ethnic background, reflecting the more open and democratic society that we live in. The mayor can use their position to inspire community pride, encourage business, promote the voluntary sector and mould social cohesion. The mayor should enhance the image of the council by ensuring the dignity of the office and promote accessibility of the office to the public. So the mayor is the chairman of the council with responsibility to uphold and promote the council's standing orders. They preside over meetings of full council so that its business can be carried out efficiently, observing the rights of councillors. They should adopt an impartial role in discharging the duties of the office and be fair in conducting business at formal meetings of the council. The ceremonial role of the mayor is to represent the town council, the community and local democracy. The mayor acts as the council's ambassador in promoting the town, hosting all the council's civic events and attending events often associated with charitable and voluntary organisations and affording them due recognition of their valuable contributions to the wellbeing of the local community. The mayor can act as a link between the various organisations they visit and can feed back the views and concerns of the people. So the deputy mayor. The deputy mayor has two major roles. Firstly, to deputise for the mayor at the mayor's request when the mayor is unable to fulfil an engagement. And secondly, to support the mayor at major civic events organised by the council. Every year, the town councillors elect from within their number their mayor and their deputy mayor for the following year. The process starts in March with nominations by members received at the March 4 council meeting. An election then takes place at the annual council meeting in May. This year, that was completed last Monday, the 24th of May. And the term of office is one year, from May to May. So before we hand over the robes and the chains of office, I would like to invite the retiring mayor, councillor Barry Von Clemens, to make his retiring address.
Thank you, Madam Town Clerk. It has been a great honour and privilege to once again serve our fabulous town as mayor. In fact, for the past seven years, I have served six years as either mayor or deputy mayor. So by now, I'm a bit of a veteran and by now, I'm sure you're all ready for a change of face. But each time I don the chain of office, I do get the feeling of pride to know that I will have a chance to represent our fabulous town for another year. Gillingham is a truly amazing town and it has only been with the support and help of that fabulous community and my fellow councillors that I have been able to try to bring to life some of the projects that we have in place as I leave office. Sorry, I've just tipped the pad over. Our green credentials are today far better than they were when I entered office. In fact, at my mayor making, I said Gillingham would not follow the herd and declare a climate emergency. We would instead act and do all we could to deal with the issues of climate change. And as a council and a community, we have done this and to date, we have achieved a great deal. I always have a good feeling when I'm at a meeting with other councillors and mayors and we are talking about what each other has done. And when it comes to Gillingham, I end up with a list of people from other councils and organisations who want to come and visit us and find out how they can follow our ideas and practices as a council. Talking with each, talking with other councils is an important part of being mayor. And I hope that I have been a good ambassador for our town. I, along with my fellow North Dorset mayors, formed the Mayors and Chairs Group for exactly that reason, to enable us to work together. I have also worked to ensure that Gillingham Town Council and Dorset Council has developed a good working relationship. This has been quite easy, a task, as I know many of those involved in developing that relationship. And also with the help of our Dorset councillors, who have been an invaluable part of forging that relationship. Forging good relationships is one of the main cornerstones of my time in office. And I like to think we, as a council, have an amazing relationship with everybody in our town. This was proved to me when the pandemic hit us. I called a meeting with our community leaders, schools and churches at only a few days' notice. Our amazing community not only turned out in force to that meeting, they stepped up to the challenge that was about to face. A challenge that none of us at the time had the faintest idea of how different it would be to anything we had ever faced before. This ensured that our town was able to face Covid in the knowledge that there would always be somebody there for anybody who needed our help. I was so proud when the High Sheriff of Dorset, after a visit between lockdowns, told me how impressed he was with Gillingham. And he backed up those words by awarding the town his High Sheriff's Community Award. In fact, Gillingham Town Council has been recognised by many different groups and organisations for its excellence. And I was very proud when DAPTC awarded us the double star for councillors' development over two consecutive years. And that's well done to every single member of this council. In fact, this has been a really busy year for Gillingham Town Council and we have achieved so many, so much, even under the many restrictions we have had to navigate during the pandemic. On our public open spaces, we have once again achieved green flag status with additional sites added to that list, thanks to our partnership with Gillingham Action for Nature Group. Up at Marlot Road, we built and completed a new play area to replace the old one. And also, we did some drainage work to try and make the site drier, so our residents can use the play area all year round. We have decided to continue with the highly successful Herbaritum project, which enables our residents to go out and just pick some herbs from their nearest herbarium and add them to their very delicious dinners. Thanks to the grant from the old North Dorset District Council, or as I like to say, the closing down sale, we have been able to refurbish both the Sidnum's Roundabout and the Peasmarsh Roundabout with the installation of a stag and two does at the Sidnum's and a single stag at Peasmarsh. This is all part of our Gateways Project. The stags are also a link to the Gillingham Royal Forest Project that Gillingham Town Council is also a stakeholder in, working with the Dorset Wildlife Trust. And before I get shot, I do know that I shouldn't have said stags, I should have said white hearts, I do apologise. We have continued to develop our working relationship with the Dorset Wildlife Trust to ensure that our management plans for our public open spaces complement the wildlife and flowers that live on them. We are also very proud to be a pollinator-friendly town and to be one of the leads in that. And under previous mayors, we've also received awards and accolades for those policies. We have completed the workshop project, which means now that the town council owns its own site from where our fabulous grounds team continue to manage our ever-growing public estate. On the High Street, we was very happy when Dorset Highways contacted us even to say they had chosen Gillingham for a Dorset L A P grant to resurface the High Street and the footpaths. This also included replacement railings for the town bridge. This was a great example of our partnership with Dorset Council and the Highways Department, who all along the way talked to the council to make sure that we was working in unison to get the effect and very good effect for our wonderful High Street. Throughout the pandemic, we have tried to do everything that we could to help promote our local businesses, which unfortunately for our local businesses, included me doing several visits after each lockdown to see how they were doing and to ask, is there anything that we could do to help? And if there was, we did our utmost to, to help them. Weather through the storm of the Covid pandemic. We welcomed a new market to our High Street on the second Sunday of the month, once again proving that we are serious in our mammoth task of revitalising the town's retail economy, along with the town's economy in general. This also includes the ongoing work in reviewing the town's neighbourhood plan and ensuring the town has a fit-for-purpose master plan to ensure the town has a good future before it. We have also continued our support for our young people. Our support for the Gillingham Youth Outreach Service in partnership with Rendezvous Sherborne has gone from strength to strength and it now offers so many more services than it originally did when we set it up, including help and support for young mothers. We have also supported the employment of a youth worker at the Gillingham Youth Club, which has enabled them to develop a great youth service throughout, through the club. We have now seen these groups starting to work in partnership on projects for our young people. And another example of how we, as a council, have facilitated the good works that help everybody in our town. As a council, we were at the forefront in developing these virtual meetings to ensure the business of the council could continue fully and safely during the pandemic. And we have to thank our wonderful clerks, Julie, Claire, Jill, Deborah, Serena, for putting that all together. And I say, I would only have known how to turn it on, I wouldn't have known any further. I could go on and on, but the problem with a virtual meeting is that Jill and Julie have control of the mute button. So I will come to a close by saying thank you to Jill, who has always been amazing in her help and support in my role as mayor. Julie, who has helped and guided me through the minefield of legislation to ensure that we have run smoothly and legally. To Deborah, who has worked tirelessly to ensure our finances are all in order as our RFO. And to Claire, who has been there whenever we have needed her and she has put in some amazing work on our public open spaces. Simon and Martin, our Works Manager and Deputy Works Manager, who have ensured that our town and its public open spaces are the envy of the area. And to all our other fabulous staff who work so hard to ensure Gillingham and its council are the best. Thanks also goes to councillor Alison Von Clemens, my baby sister, who has supported me as my consort through my term of office as mayor. And of course, to you, my fellow councillors, for their help and support. I would also like to thank everybody who, over the past few days, have sent me letters, emails and messages. I won't go into it because I spoke to Julie earlier and I started to well up. It was really, really moving and to coin a phrase, I was totally gobsmacked by the number of lovely messages that I have received. So thank you to everybody. Really nice. And now I would finally like to wish councillor Harris and councillor Culliford, our incoming mayor and deputy mayor, all the best in the coming year. And I hope that I am handing over to you a council that is in good order and ready to move forward upwards and onwards. Thank you very much. I'd now like to hand you back to the Town Clerk.
Thank you very much, councillor Von Clemens. I do apologise, I seem to have frozen, so I'm going to have to do this without moving my lips. So at the town council meeting on the 24th of May, the proposer and seconder for the town mayor were councillor Porter and councillor Kilkus. Councillor Harris, QGM, accepted the nomination and by a show of hands, the councillors' vote was carried. Councillor Harris, as duly elected mayor of Gillingham, made his declaration of acceptance of office and signed accordingly. Also, councillor Cullingford was elected deputy mayor and made the appropriate declaration of acceptance of office. So the mayoral robes and regalia will now be handed over. Please may I ask councillor Harris to swear the oath?
I, Paul Harris, do swear that I will well and truly serve our sovereign, Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II and the people of Gillingham in the office of mayor in accordance with Part 1, Section 15 of the Local Government Act 1972, the town of Gillingham in the county of Dorset and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties of it according to the best of my judgement and ability.
Mr. Mayor, would you like to announce your mayress, please?
My mayress for the next year will be my wife, Mrs. Jean Harris.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, would you like to present the mayress with her badge of office? Thank you. So with the new mayor of Gillingham, councillor Paul Harris, please make his address.
Thank you, Madam Town Clerk. The fellow councillors, representatives of Gillingham organisations, Gillingham residents and not least family and friends around me here today, thank you for giving your time this evening to join us for the small ceremony. There are both disadvantages and advantages of a virtual event. We all miss the opportunity to talk to one another, both before and after the event. We will certainly miss the place, the event reception, and I trust that this will come back on the agenda next year. However, the virtual event does allow many more people from outside of Gillingham and from outside of the county to see our ceremony. I'm particularly delighted to welcome the deputy mayor's family members who join us live from America. To start, I'd like to acknowledge a number of people. First must be the residents of Gillingham. You choose your representatives to sit on the council. You challenge the councillors to do a great job for the town, which they do for no financial reward. And you give the council your unstinting support. Without your support, the council would not be able to achieve the things that it has done, as mentioned by councillor Von Clemens in his retiring address, or what it plans to do on your behalf in the future. So thank you. Next are the councillors. You give your valuable time to the council activities and do so without any financial remuneration, unlike other councils. I appreciate the trust that you have put in me in electing me to the position of mayor and therefore chairman of the council for the next 12 months. I will do my utmost to repay that faith you have shown in me. Thank you. And finally, I would like to thank our outgoing mayor, councillor Barry Von Clemens, for his leadership over the past two years. No one knew that when he took up the appointment in May 2019, that within 10 months, the country would be facing a pandemic of the size and nature that developed. It was his leadership that allowed the council to just get on with the job and quickly form the community volunteer system. Here we are now, two years after the start of mayor oral service and 14 months through the pandemic, as we start to get back to normal. He has set the conditions for success in the future and we now need to deliver that success. So thank you for your service as mayor. As I reflect on what a mayor can achieve in a 12-month period, I'm struck by the thought that this is all about teamwork. It's the councillors, the staff and those residents who choose to stand up and assist the council, deliver on its plans, that's most important. What we achieve, we achieve together. We can always do better if we have up-to-date knowledge. And I know councillor Von Clemens has mentioned a little bit about the double star awards that we have received from the Dorset Association of Parish and Town Councils. Those double star awards recognise that up to 60% of councillors undertook training during each of those two years. We can always learn to do more and so I challenge the councillors to all undertake some form of training in the next year. Gillingham should aspire to be the first council in Dorset to get the triple star award for training. That means 90% of councillors have taken at least one course in the year. For us, that means that 16 out of our 17 councillors should undergo training to meet the target. It's actually not unreasonable, therefore, to ask every councillor to undertake training in the coming year. I've already signed up to two courses, one covering a subject that I believe I know well, but I'm sure there's something new that I can learn. The council has many core activities and has core expenses that come with the role of being a council. Beyond that, it has plans and aspirations. Council starts planning its budget in October annually and by January, it sets a budget and this feeds into the precept, which is the money raised from residents to allow the council to do its work. The precept is collected by Dorset Council and paid to Gillingham in two parts, in April and September. So when a mayor takes office in May, the funding for the council and its projects for the mayor oral year were finalised some four months earlier. Hence, the mayor leads a team delivering a programme which is already in place. The opportunity to influence change during the mayor oral year is minimal. The key, therefore, is to influence future change. So what is the plan for the next 12 months? I could just say, look at the budget. It shows where the breakdown of costs is for the year and identifies what projects are being brought forward. However, that's just part of the work of the council. So let's have a look at the bigger picture. We start this mayor oral year with a little reorganisation of the council's structure. We had three principal committees. General purpose, which is the workhorse of the council, with many subcommittees and task and finish groups. Finance, with a subcommittee dealing with staff issues or human resources. And planning. We've reorganised the four principal committees. General purpose remains in place. Finance takes on policy. Planning remains in place and human resources or HR becomes a full committee in its own right. We now have seven, sorry, 11 subcommittees, 11 task and finish groups and we send council representatives to 11 appside organisations. And of course, we welcome support from residents. This year, we will review the Gillingham neighbourhood plan. A subcommittee has recently been formed and work now starts in August. The neighbourhood plan came into being in 2018. The formal term for that is that the plan was made. And this was after six years' hard work by a committed team of residents and councillors. It's now three years old and needs a review to remain valid. A plan lays out how the town believes it should develop and encompasses areas such as housing, retail and town centre use, transport, open spaces and community facilities. It identifies the type of building suitable for each area of the town, characterising its development over the years. It's an evidence-based policy document to inform developers, stakeholders, planning officers and planning committees what is acceptable to us and what is not. It contributes to our defence to counter unwanted or unwarranted developments. We will work with the town team and the Dorset council in a continuing work to plan the rejuvenation of Station Road. This is a long-term project, but critical to the rejuvenation of the area close to one of our main transport networks, that is the railway. We aim to deliver a master plan for Station Road and the town centre. This work will sit alongside and use the work of the town team and not replicate it. It is also a supporting document for the neighbourhood plan. And finally, I'm leading the development of a five-year plan. This includes many of the projects that we aspire to deliver and in what timeframe. This plan uses the output from the annual management and operation plans. It will encompass things such as replacements of play areas at a due time. And councillor Von Clemens mentioned Marlot Road earlier. We've got 16 such play areas, each with a different lifespan, depending on what we provide in each of the areas. The five-year plan has links to the budget, as we can only do what we have funding for. This year's budget work for the financial year 2223 will include a forecast for the following two years. We won't be bound by the forecast because things will change in the meantime, but it will give us an indication of what we could do and what budget we would need to achieve it. The five-year plan will reference projects that we aspire to further into the future and will lay down some strategic objectives. For example, we're already taking action to change the way we use energy. Our energy all now comes from green energy suppliers. Roman Court, and that is the new name for our workshop area, previously known as Roman Business Centre, will not have a piped gas supply during our ownership. It's taken us five months of effort and payment in advance to have the main gas supply removed and this will happen on the 9th of June. We've already changed many of our power tools to electric. We will change to electric vans when we next need vehicles, provided we've been able to install electric charging points at the workshop and at the town hall. And we have installed solar panels to generate electricity on the large roof area of our workshop. workshop. This is likely to be in a timeframe outside of the first five-year plan due to cost, but we will record the aspirations so that we can place accruals in the budget annually to pay for the work in due course. We will, of course, seek grant funding wherever possible to reduce, reduce the financial burden on the precept and therefore on our residents. We've been talking about budgets tonight and you can't have failed to notice the new mayoral robes that I'm now wearing. The deputy mayor and I felt that it is the right time to make a change. We're coming out of the pandemic and we need an outward sign that things will be different as we leave lockdown. The Town Clerk, in her opening words, said, 'The mayor is a symbol of the authority', meaning the town, 'identifiable by robes and chains of office'. The robes for Gillingham's Mayor and Deputy Mayor have had a good run. My research shows that they are at least two and a half decades old and there may be some of you out there who can confirm when they actually came into use. Urban legend has it that the material used in the robes had a previous life before being used in the robes and I can neither confirm nor deny that. The new robes follow the tradition of Gillingham. Whereas the majority of mayoral robes are red with black trim, ours remain blue, Gillingham Town Council's colour. Instead of a yellow lining for the mayor's robes as previously, we now have gold facings and trim for both the mayor and the deputy mayor, though there are some distinctions between them. The gold represents the gold standard to which Gillingham Town Council aspires in all that it does. The material has been specially selected for the robes, it is lightweight, hard-wearing, crease-free and designed to last five to six, even up to eight decades of formal and ceremonial use. Formal, where we will return to using the robes at full council meetings, the annual town meeting and the annual town council meeting. Ceremonial, such as the Remembrance Day Parade and Service, the annual carol service and the mayor making ceremony. There will be other times, such as the mayor's participation in the carnival parades and switching on the Christmas lights, where the use may be appropriate. You'll have heard my previous description of how our budget works and will no doubt think that the council has failed to identify a funding line for such robes. Never fear, the deputy and I, deputy mayor and I, have determined that new robes are appropriate and we have personally funded the two robes and tonight, we gift them to Gillingham Town. We place them in the care of Gillingham Town Council to be accounted for as an asset and cared for in the same way as previous robes. So in ending, I look forward to looking, to working with the community and with the community over the next year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I seem to have an echo. Thank you, Mister Mayor. And now to the deputy mayor. And the deputy mayoral robes and regalia will now be handed over. Councillor Cullingford, would you like to announce your deputy consort, please?
Yes, I would. My deputy consort is my husband, Mr Stuart Cullingford.
Thank you. Councillor Cullingford, would you like to present your consort with his badge of office? Thank you. We're going to hand back now to our Mayor, councillor Harris.
Councillors, ladies and gentlemen, that brings us to the end of this most unusual and short online ceremony. We've introduced you to your new Mayor and Deputy Mayor for the next twelve months and thanked our past, our past Mayor for his service. We trust that as life begins to open again, open up again, the deputy mayor and I, plus the mayoress and the deputy mayor's consort, will have the opportunity to get out and about, attend gatherings and meet you all face to face once more. To that end, my first appointment will be on the town meadow this Saturday, when I attend a plant sale with various groups having a stall, so please come along and support them. I hope to see you there. There are no special announcements for this evening and so I formally close this meeting and thank you all for attending. Good night.